Under God, peace and invisibility, justice for all.
He's muted now. It says feedback.
My first, uh, first item on the agenda is a, is a, a joint appointment, uh, with the Burlington Housing Authority and the Board of Selectmen to fill a vacancy till the next general election. Actually, we've got three members of the Housing Authority present. Could you, could you join us at the, uh, the table up here, please? And I see Brian remotely, do I?
Yeah, we're gonna give him permission.
Okay.
We can unmute them.
We're gonna do it anyway.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, Brian, good to see you.
Thank you, Brian.
Welcome. Here. Um, okay, we have four Housing Authority members and, uh, five members of the Select Board are in attendance, so I have a quorum on, on both sides, so, uh, we will, uh, declare the meeting open. We have three candidates for a vacancy on the Housing Authority. Their, their resumes and, uh, letters of interest are included in our backup materials here this evening. We're gonna afford each, each applicant, if they choose, to two minutes to introduce themselves and make themselves available for any questions from the, uh, from the voting members. And we're gonna, uh, we'll do this in the order that the, uh, applications were received. I think, Michael, Michael Kelly, are you here this afternoon? Michael? I don't see, I don't see Mike.
I'm gonna check.
Is he remote? Is he remote?
Check the hall.
If he shows up, we'll give him a...
There's one caller. I don't know who it is.
How about Mr. Nagel? Mr. Nagel, are you, are you present?
I'm present.
Come on up, why don't you have a seat up here next to, uh, next to Lynn?
Just right here.
That's fine.
Just here.
Mike, nice to meet you. If you just give a brief introduction of, of yourself and, uh, if the board has any questions, we'll, we'll go right around.
Great.
Great.
Um, well, thank you, thank you to the, uh, the Board of Select, the Select Board as well as the Housing Authority Board for this opportunity to introduce myself and my qualifications, hopefully for this position. I'm currently the Executive Director of the Arlington Housing Authority, which oversees 713 units of public, state-aided public housing, as well as 427 Housing Choice vouchers. Uh, when I saw this position became available, I was extremely interested, uh, largely because of the good reputation that the Housing Authority in Burlington has, um, as well as, you know, hopefully some of the contributions that I'd be able to make, uh, being an administrator at, at another housing authority in the nearby area. Um, I'm, I'm hopeful that you'll give me good consideration, and if not, I, well, I'm, if, if you choose somebody else, I, I hope that I'll be provided an opportunity maybe in the future. Uh, but thank you all very much, and I'm, I'm available for any, any questions or anything like that.
All right, Jack, thank you very much. Uh, questions from Housing Authority members? Mr. Curtin? I want you to hand it over.
Gentlemen, colleagues at the table, any questions for Jack? Right, sure. Uh, Mr. Nagel, thank you for supplying your resume. Um, so, you've been the Executive Director of the Arlington Housing Authority for a couple of years now?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, what would you say is the, the biggest challenge, uh, being the Executive Director of the Housing, uh, Arlington Housing Authority?
Um, the big, the biggest things that we deal with on it, um, some of the biggest challenges that we have on a day-to-day is we, uh, we have an aging portfolio. Many of our developments were built in the, in the late 40s, 60s, 70s, and maybe, if we're lucky, um, the early 80s. Um, with that being said, there's a lot of different funding opportunities and ways in which we can leverage state funds, federal funds, and other sources to try to maintain and preserve our, our authorities. You know, if given the opportunity, I'd like to contribute and, um, and assist the, the board in considering different options where available. And some of the other, you know, some of the other challenges that Housing Authorities have is, is the mental health of, of residents, um, you know. There's, there's not, the, the resources don't exist that existed maybe, um, X number of years ago related to the resources for residents in our portfolio. Housing Authorities are put in a position where we need to find ways to, to help our residents and help them maintain their housing, uh, whether it's aging in place or, um, finding the services needed to make sure that they are able to live in healthy means.
Awesome, thank you. And all of your certifications and licenses apply to all the positions you've held over the last 10 years?
Um, not the housing ones.
Okay.
I, I've been in the housing industry for about five years.
Okay.
Uh, prior to that, I worked for the Department of Transitional Assistance, and prior to that, I was in the Army.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Just one.
Yes, just one.
Joe. Thank you for coming in tonight. Your resume is, uh, fantastic. Uh, my question is, out of the three candidates, two of them are gonna get picked naturally, right? We're only gonna pick one. Would you still be interested in doing something with the town? Because we're always looking for people to help out with the town in, in different areas. So that's what we're kinda, it, it doesn't make a decision on, on our Housing Authority, but it's just something I'd like to bring up to you, because we do need young people, and whatever kind of's gonna turn out tonight, I don't know yet, so...
No, absolutely, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd be interested in any, any opportunities that exist within the town of Burlington to provide any, any assistance in any area. So if there's any opportunities that come up in the Select Board or the Housing Authority Board sees that I might be a good fit for, I'd, I'd definitely, um, like to be considered for that.
Thank you, thank you. Another good question, Joe, thank you. Anybody else? Jack, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, I saw you come in, uh, would you like to come up and introduce yourself, uh, quickly and give us a little bit of background? Yeah, have a seat. Make yourself comfortable. There you go.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, um, the reason why I decided to apply for the vacancy for the Housing Authority was because...
Michael, come a little bit closer to you, Mike. Thank you.
I, I, I feel there's a real need for housing help in town. I mean, I just feel like, like I wanna be able to help this town. You know, I figured by me applying to the Housing Authority, it would have me have an opportunity to help out. Um, like I said, I, uh, entered residence since 2015, so even though I had ran for school committee twice and lost, I still felt this was an opportunity for me to try to help out the town and to try to be able to do things, to try to help the Housing Authority, to see if we can try to get more affordable housing.
Okay, Michael. All right, Mike, great. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Um, any, any questions for Mr. Kelly? Anybody? Boyd?
I'm gonna ask the same question.
Good.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, I'm gonna ask you the same question. We know how many, um, openings are on as one.
Yep.
Three guys running. Would you still be interested in a position, uh, of that magnitude or something else in town, uh, if you don't get elected or appointed to the position tonight?
Sure.
Yeah. Is there any interest in certain places or just...
Um, I don't see anything that comes up.
Great, great. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Michael. Excuse me. Uh, Walter DeCoste. There you are, my friend. Come on up.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Walter DeCoste. I've been, lived in Burlington since 1948. I spent, uh, as a teenager on DPW part-time, and I became a firefighter for the town for 30 years. I have worked with, uh, Jane Chu, uh, Amy Waha on the elections. Of, uh, I believe that I have some extra time now. I can get involved with the Housing Authority just as a beginning. Like I said, I've lived in town now since 1948. I still live in the same property that my grandfather owned. And, uh, being a senior citizen, I have an idea of what the needs are for other senior citizens. And I'd like to be considered for the, uh, app, on the board. I believe I can be an asset to them. Thank you.
All right, Wally, thank, thank you very much. Questions for Mr. DeCoste from Housing Authority members?
Unless Brian does, I don't know.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I know all very well.
Uh, any, uh, members of the, uh, Select Board, any questions for Wally? Joe?
Yeah. Gotta go through all of them. Walter, you just heard my little spiel a couple of minutes ago about there's only gonna be one, one appointed position here tonight, this three is running. Uh, being a senior in town, and I know you've been here a long time, uh, is there another position that you'd be interested in, or would you be interested in, uh, another spot in town if you don't get picked tonight?
I'd be interested in probably something else, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joe. Wally, thank you, thank you very much for, for coming tonight. All right, it, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have, ask the Executive Secretary to roll-call, uh, all the members. There are three candidates. Each of the voting members will, uh, voice their, their choice for, uh, to fill that vacancy. In the event of a tie, um, what we'll do, we'll take the top two vote-getters, and we'll start, uh, all over again, so... If there are any questions regarding the, how we're gonna do this. Okay, um, Lynn, I'm gonna turn it over to you for roll-call.
That was Brian.
My vote is for Wally DeCoste.
This is Baron.
Mr. Howard.
Mr. DeCoste.
Mr. Fay.
Walter DeCoste.
Jimmy.
Walter DeCoste.
John Nagel.
Walter DeCoste.
Walter DeCoste.
Mr. Nagel.
Five, I've got, uh...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven, seven in favor for Mr. DeCoste.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. DeCoste, congratulations. You are the, uh, candidate to fill the vacancy for the, for the remainder of that term. And I wanna thank the members. Mike, great to see you all, by the way. Thank you. Give it, give it just a moment. All righty, item 171, uh, an update, um, from the Burlington Elementary School Building Committee. Melissa Massaro is here to speak on behalf of the committee. There's not a public hearing, by the way. It's just an, it's just a, it's just an update from the committee.
I have Dr. Conti with me.
And Superintendent, uh, Conti is, is here as well. Nice to see you both. Thank you for, for joining us this evening and look forward to your update.
Sure.
I believe John's gets some, John's gonna be in charge of our video portion of the presentation.
Perfect. Um, thank you. At our last school building committee meeting, um, we voted eight to three in favor of coming to the Select Board to ask for a town-wide referendum. Um, since, since then, um, we've discovered, I believe, that the town bylaws don't allow for a special election referendum outside of, um, existing elections, and so the next one being in April. And we felt, uh, that April would be too late to, um, hold an election in, in terms of this, delaying this project. So, um, we're going to move forward with community input in another way, but, um, I wanted to bring to your, uh, meeting just an update on the project, since we wouldn't be moving forward with the official, uh, referendum. So, uh, the school building committee has narrowed down. We successfully submitted, um, a preliminary design proposal to the MSBA, and we have three remaining building options through the MSBA program. Uh, I highlighted here today, uh, what those three options are. Uh, one, option three is a single Fox Hill at the Fox Hill site for 325 students. Option six and eight are a combined school with 640 students. Uh, option six is on the Fox Hill site, and option eight is on the Pine Glen site. Um, those are the three remaining options that we're exploring through the MSBA. For exploratory purposes and to understand the costs, um, I've outlined, we had an option nine, which is a non-MSBA-funded project, which option, um, three and option nine together would be two new schools on separate sites. Uh, you can see the tax, the district costs and tax impact to each. Um, and then in the hopes of setting the full context, the non-MSBA potential high school project, for which, uh, we have a feasibility study ongoing, uh, is listed at the bottom to understand, um, the cost implications of all the different projects that we're exploring. Um, because, uh, we all know what a 325-student school looks like, um, I just wanted to add what the quote-unquote "butterfly" school, um, would look like. That option we're exploring at Fox Hill or at Pine Glen, um, this option was introduced as a way to keep the four schools, the four small schools, um, so it is basically two 325-student schools that would be attached. They would each have their own entrance, principal, nurse, mascot, playground, PTO, et cetera. The gym and library would be large enough to share, um, and they each have their own cafeteria. I know, um, traffic has been a concern around the project, um, but the driveway design, as well as ongoing DPW projects, would alleviate, uh, the majority of the traffic backups getting in and out of the site. You wanna go, John, to the next slide quickly? This is just a quick show of the district elementary school enrollment over the past 10 years. The green bar being what the MSBA is projecting we open at. Um, so all the school options should meet our enrollment needs. And then, if you wanna go one more slide, this is, um, like I said, we have, we are committed to town-wide input. Um, I think that that is what the building committee is really looking for, the entire town, uh, to weigh in on what, um, level of costs the town is willing to bear, as well as what, um, options are preferable. So we have a project website that the town can follow along with, and we are planning an in-person community meeting, um, at the high school on September 18th at 7:00 PM. Um, that's been posted to the townwide calendar. Uh, we will continue to get, um, additional advertising for that. Um, we're really looking for the entire town to weigh in at that point. Um, and this timeline goes through where we are today, um, in August, still evaluating options. We have a community meeting. The school building committee will vote on their preferred option this November to, in order to submit the decision to the MSBA, MSBA in December. And you'll notice the green is we'll be spending the majority of next year working on the design, and then next fall is when we would expect, um, a town-wide vote, town meeting vote, et cetera, for the funding for the school, which would then, um, be agreed upon in January of 2025. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you for the update, huh? Before I go to questions, I was gonna toss it over to Mr. Sagarino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just also wanna recognize, school committee member Simon is also, uh, in, in the room here, uh, for the meeting. Just in terms of the referendum, um, just to clarify a couple of things Melissa said, um, it would be state law, not a town by law, that would only allow for a town-wide referendum to occur at the annual town election in April. And that's just, uh, too far along in the timeline to be of much benefit to the community in, in terms of, uh, getting, uh, public input on the project. Uh, and just the other, only other thing I wanted to add was, um, I think it was a year ago where we had Tom Hazen to talk about sidewalks here in town, and the board, uh, made a decision you wanna prioritize sidewalks on Donald and Vincent at that time. So I think one of the things that we're gonna wanna do is to try to bring, uh, Tom back in here and just try to set a timeline, uh, so we can coordinate that sidewalk work with whatever option the town decides for at this site. Uh, we wanna just try to coordinate our sidewalk work to coincide with the construction project. So, you know, when the building's ready to open, um, you know, everything will be in place for that. So we'll, we'll schedule that for a subsequent, uh, Select Board meeting, and we'll talk about sidewalks and timing and scheduling of those.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure we will. All right, uh, thank you, Paul. Um, uh, members of the board, you got any, any, um, questions or comments from Melissa? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just looking at options three and nine here. The single Fox Hill school, 82,000, that's the district cost, town cost. What's the MSBA money being added to that? Or is there...
Um, it's very roughly, at this point in time, about 25%. Um, so the, um, I'm trying to think off the top. I think it was like $105 million for the, the total cost. Is that correct?
So the actual cost for Fox Hill is 105?
Yep.
Okay, and then I'm just trying to see why the, like, so non-MSBA at Pine Glen, that would also be 105, too?
I think it's slightly smaller, because there's no lab at Pine Glen.
So there's no what?
It's a little bit smaller because there's no lab program at Pine Glen. Uh, that's a, a district collaborative for special ed is at Fox Hill, so it makes the Fox Hill building slightly larger. So they're both roughly $100 million. In option nine, we still get money for the small Fox Hill. We just wouldn't get money for the, um, Pine Glen.
Why, and why, can I ask why that is, or what the reason is?
Um, the MSBA is only one school at a time.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
First off, thank you both for coming. I appreciate it. In terms of the community meeting happening in September, knowing that we can't do the non-money referendum vote, because it's obviously complicated, and the timing is just not in anyone's favor at this point, how are we gonna get word? I mean, this is obviously something that's gonna affect the entire town, right? Uh, you know, we're talking about, at, at a minimum, a couple hundred dollars a year, uh, for at least the life of the, the loan, right, uh, affecting taxpayers. So how are we gonna maximize getting word out, at least at the September event, preceding the November vote, so that as many folks who are maybe unaware of what's going on right now...
Sure, I think I have, uh, I think that was a little bit two-pronged. So for these community meetings, um, I am welcome, I am open to any additional suggestions on how to advertise them. I think last time we did the, um, code-red phone call, we will do that again. Um, Amy is gonna get us a couple more, like, little signs, like the, I forget what you call them, the, the signs on the road at the common. Um, it's already on the town calendar. Um, I believe Marge has it in her community center and the senior center newsletter already. Um, we can send it out through the district. Um, I post it at the library. Any and all folks are welcome to share it. Um, so advertising that, I think, is definitely incredibly important. The second piece, to get more input there, we're gonna talk tonight at the school building committee meeting and probably tomorrow at the regular school committee meeting, um, about getting, um, some software to kind of mimic a survey, uh, to get more input that way, so that all residents can weigh in.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alex? Anybody? Michael?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you guys for coming tonight. Um, I know this is, and for all of your efforts with the school. Um, it's a hot button op, um, obvious topic in town, and, uh, I've been actually following along pretty close, and I have a couple of questions here. I know the, the four-school model is important to everyone, and I'm glad to see we're gonna keep it either way, whether we do the new Fox Hill and whatever with Pine Glen, or if we do the two schools on one site. I mean, that's good. That seems like it's very important to people. I'm glad. Um, if we do the 325-student Fox Hill by itself, what happens to Pine Glen? And how long do we have to wait for a new Pine Glen, because they'll get left behind, won't they?
Through the chair, Mr. Spail, I, I think there are some questions that we would need to further explore. Is, um, we've always worked collaboratively with, uh, the town on their long-term debt schedule. We would continue to do that. This isn't just a, a sort of a school decision alone, even though, um, that's really where I would be weighing in, but understanding there are other projects that, uh, the town needs to be, um, responsible for, whether Pine Glen needs to be fully rebuilt, whether it needs to be an addition renovation. I think all those conversations would need to, um, enter into, um, sort of what we're, what we were doing, what we were approaching. From an educational perspective, again, which is my approach to this, is Pine Glen is a much more functional school because, uh, the classrooms are actually built more traditionally with solid walls, and, um, the, the building functions better. Fox Hill, um, although it was very creative design in its time, um, was an open classroom model with many movable walls that are no longer moving. It just doesn't function well now, uh, as a school. So, uh, Fox Hill was our priority in order to, writing to the state to be, um, replaced, and I would say that is still sort of important. Um, but we have other building needs, as you're all aware, as the town is all aware. So I, again, I really can't answer that question. But, uh, uh, again, I think Pine, Pine Glen functions, uh, much better as a school because of its, um, I would say, more traditional, uh, more traditional design.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Conti. And that leads to another question, is, um, we have other needs, and I think, I mean, respectfully, I know we're talking about the elementary schools here, but it's on the charts, so I'm gonna go there. I think Burlington really needs a new high school. As I exhibited last year with my exchange students, it seems like every town around us is getting a new high school, and half the, the, uh, those classrooms don't have windows, it's very dated, and, um, I hear the boilers are, are end-of-life. What, what does that mean? What do we have left with the high school?
Again, I think those are all great questions. That's why the town has generously funded a feasibility study. I think we'll be much better to answer those questions accurately, once we get into that and bring the expertise in. Um, you've mentioned a lot of critiques of the building, but I will say the building is well-maintained because, again, of the support of, of town meeting. And I think the, um, importance to me, again, from an educational perspective, is we have debt, very, um, we have building needs, absolutely, but the most important thing for the delivery of education for students is the maintenance of our operating budget, uh, moving forward. And I think it's our people that make the difference, um, even if some of our buildings are older. Again, they all function well, uh, they're all well-maintained, and we're looking to, again, make sure we work with the town. These are 30, 40, 50-year decisions, given the age of our current buildings. So I think we need to think about that as well, moving forward. You did mention time, and I do wanna, uh, Mr. Chair, recognize the time that Mr. Sagarino and Mr. Denizio are also putting in to the building committee, which is, again, above and beyond their day-to-day responsibilities as well. So we sort of welcome their input and, uh, know that this is, uh, another meeting that, uh, another night out that, uh, uh, that they have to, uh, attend to.
Appreciate the recognition. Well, uh, well deserved. I, I agree.
Yeah, another follow-up to that, and I, I wasn't implying anything about the educational model. I mean, when I went to open, um, the open house last year, I was blown away by the quality of teachers, and was so impressed that night, um, getting to walk through in each period we went through. It just, seeing that biology classroom with no windows, and the teacher having to say, "I put up Christmas lights in my, in my classroom to, to make it," because we don't have a window, "to make it feel like they're outside." I just, I mean, I graduated from BHS in 1991, and it was the same biology classroom. So that's why I, I really think we really do need a, uh, a new high school, and I'm glad to see we're moving forward with the feasibility study, so hopefully we can get along moving with that.
Well, I hope the teacher said they put up winter lights, is what I hope. And I'm sure they did. And, uh, um, yes, we have some limitations on the building. But again, I think because this board has, um, responsibility for the financial impact of all of these, I think just what I wanted to make sure I reminded is our operating budget is as critical, or from my perspective, more critical than these, these decisions, and they should be also considered in, in partnership. So again, when we come back to you, uh, we'll have more information, and, um, I do think we are gathering as much information as we possibly can. I think the best source of information is the, uh, Fox Hill website. Again, I think that's the most accurate place to, to find information. And then we are looking for, um, again, for better scenarios for the future for Pine Glen, and then for the future for the high school is the work that we're, we're putting in. And, and again, I think the school building committee, the school committee, um, will be having, um, we have to follow a process. I think we're seeking public input, and I think that process will be, uh, reaching a conclusion.
The end of this year?
End of this year, so by the, by the end of the calendar year. So again, relatively, relatively soon.
Thank you. I appreciate your efforts, and, uh, I know we have a lot of, you know, three schools and a police station. We have a, a lot, you guys have a lot, a lot of work to figure out how we're gonna pay for everything. So we, uh, we'll look forward to, uh, hearing more of the discussion. Thank you for your time. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you both for being here tonight. Um, just a couple of quick questions. I got one of my questions answered.
I got one of my questions answered, uh, from Mr. Priest, I got another question answered from the taxes there. The question I have is that, so we, we're actually, not we, you are thinking about putting one big school in at Fox Hill, right? Is that what we're talking about? One, one, one big school at Fox Hill for Pine Glen and Fox Hill? I'm just trying to get everything in my head.
I think that's one of, one of the options, Mr. Miranda, yes.
Well, the option would be to have that one big school with, how many kids would be in that school?
Um, again, there's a capacity, and then there's an enrollment. I think what the state is saying is it would be designed for the capacity of six hundred and forty students.
Six hundred, okay.
But, but again, who's, that's, that's the planning number.
Okay, so let's just go around and up and say six hundred. In today's society, kids don't take buses, so you gotta put three hundred cars on those roads up there, that the kids are gonna be going in and out if you build one big school. That doesn't count teachers and, uh, staff?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay, I'm just trying to get it all in my head. We keep it the way it is now, with two schools, we got three hundred and three hundred, and basically the same traffic pattern.
Mr. Miranda, the only sort of picky thing I would say is if we, we keep four schools on four sites, because I think one of the conversations that we're having is there would be, um, the combined school, that the option that you're looking at, um, the attempt is to keep two separate schools but on one site. So I think what you are saying is keep four schools on four sites, so a Fox Hill, Fox Hill site, Pine Glen on a Pine Glen site, I wanna make sure that's the correct distinction.
I was getting confused.
Yes.
I kept saying Fox Hill, Pine Glen, and I kept saying together, it's like, all right, they're together, but they, I want, I, I just don't think that's the problem.
Sure, we had, we had almost five hundred students at Fox Hill, um, last year, so it's, it's about a forty percent increase.
But playing five hundred students, then you gotta add how many from Pine Glen?
So, if we, their redistricting is gonna happen in every scenario. So there, there's about four hundred and forty students at Fox Hill now, there was four hundred and eighty there two years ago now, uh, it'd be at Fox Hill.
At Fox Hill.
Yep. So it would be two sides with the capacity of three hundred and twenty on each side.
That's still six hundred kids in a school.
Yep.
I'm just, like I said, I'm just trying to grab a concept there, so, I'm thinking about the residents and the taxes and everything else. I don't have to vote on it, so.
You'll have to pay them.
I'm gonna have to pay twice.
Twice.
Yep. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anything further, any follow-ups? The board? All right, Dr. Conti, Melissa, thank you both for, for the update.
Thank you.
We'll see you on September eighteenth.
September eighteenth, yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Item one seventy-two, appointment to the Conservation Commission Committee, Mr. Keely.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, so we have a, I'm John Keely, Conservation Administrator. Uh, we have a vacancy on the Conservation Commission, and, um, we did some outreach, and we actually had, uh, a candidate reach out to us to, uh, do some volunteer work on the Conservation Commission, and we said, we told her we had a vacancy, and, um, it seemed like a match. She's got a science background, she's lived in town for like fourteen years, she's right here, Sarah, Sarah Olinsky. And, um, so I made a recommendation to the town administrator to appoint her, and, uh, that's it.
Oh, okay. Miss, um, any questions from the board? An appointment, sorry, again, Paul Sagarino.
And I will accept John's, uh, recommendation and appoint, uh, Sarah Olinsky to the Conservation Commission and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Joe, second by, uh, Mr. Priest. Anything further? Being none on my favor?
Aye.
All, five zero zero. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Okay, um, again, this is the best part of our job, I think, we make these appointments and promotions and, and all that stuff. So I'm, I'm pleased to call on, uh, Chief Carnetti. We've got some appointments, promotions for the fire department.
Good evening. Um, I have four appointments to recommend for tonight. I'm gonna start with, um, the limited assignment firefighters. Um, first off is, uh, retired Fire Lieutenant Mark Saya. Um, he just recently retired and, um, would like to stay on and help us out with special details, and, um, he's been retired on August fourth, he's been with the department for twenty-five years, and he was our last EMS officer. Um, he did a great job helping us transition to advanced life support, and he would be a great addition to the limited assignment firefighters.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, and with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Mark Saya to the position of limited assignment firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All, five zero zero for Lieutenant Saya. Congratulations on your retirement, Mark, wherever you.
Uh, he could not make it.
Wherever you may be, okay.
Can't call him.
I think he's flying. Um, second off, I'd, uh, like to recommend firefighter Fred Williams. Uh, he is coming up for retirement, but this meeting, uh, would get him to the limited assignment firefighter status right after he retires. Um, his last day work would be the thirty-first, and his first day as a limited assignment firefighter would be September first. Um, he's had an exemplary, exemplary career, uh, he served the town for thirty-four years. Um, I can honestly say, from day one until today, and I expect next week, he's gonna be offering, uh, support and ideas for the improvement of the department. Um, so I'm pleased to recommend firefighter Williams for appointment to the limited assignment firefighter.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Uh, and with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Fred Williams to the position of limited assignment firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
All moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't go anywhere, actually, we both, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero, unanimous. Fred's here, and Fred, I'd like you to come up and shake your hand for.
Congratulations.
Good for, good for him, I'm very happy for Fred, as well as the others.
Okay, next up, I'd like to, uh, recommend firefighter William Tolan for the promotion to the position of lieutenant. Um, there was a test that occurred this year, um, you have multiple eligible firefighters, and they could all, uh, do the job, um, but he, uh, was at the top of the list, reachable, and, uh, he is one of the, uh, one of the firefighters that has served as a senior firefighter, um, which means he takes the place of a, uh, absent lieutenant, uh, on the tower truck. Um, and in that role, he's, he's developed a little bit of taste for the position of lieutenant. Uh, he's been a firefighter for eighteen years, firefighter one-two certified, he's a member of our honor guard, um, and another thing, he is, uh, he's a builder, and what we need to know in the fire service, when a structure is on fire, it's very important knowing how buildings are made. So hopefully that knowledge will, uh, assist him and his crews and all of us in, uh, in our, in doing our jobs. Uh, he's a lifelong Burlington resident, graduate of Burlington High School, he and his wife Mary are raising their three children here in Burlington, uh, he's been involved as a youth, youth sports volunteer, uh, he's very experienced, high-quality firefighter with proven abilities in the role of senior firefighter. I'm pleased to recommend firefighter William Tolan for promotion to lieutenant.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, and with the chief's recommendation, I appoint William Tolan to the position of lieutenant in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All, five zero zero for Lieutenant Saya. Congratulations on your retirement, Mark, wherever you.
Uh, he could not make it.
Wherever you may be, okay.
Can't call him.
I think he's flying. Um, second off, I'd, uh, like to recommend firefighter Fred Williams. Uh, he is coming up for retirement, but this meeting, uh, would get him to the limited assignment firefighter status right after he retires. Um, his last day work would be the thirty-first, and his first day as a limited assignment firefighter would be September first. Um, he's had an exemplary, exemplary career, uh, he served the town for thirty-four years. Um, I can honestly say, from day one until today, and I expect next week, he's gonna be offering, uh, support and ideas for the improvement of the department. Um, so I'm pleased to recommend firefighter Williams for appointment to the limited assignment firefighter.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Uh, and with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Fred Williams to the position of limited assignment firefighter in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
All moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Don't go anywhere, actually, we both, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero, unanimous. Fred's here, and Fred, I'd like you to come up and shake your hand for.
Congratulations.
Good for, good for him, I'm very happy for Fred, as well as the others.
Okay, next up, I'd like to, uh, recommend firefighter William Tolan for the promotion to the position of lieutenant. Um, there was a test that occurred this year, um, you have multiple eligible firefighters, and they could all, uh, do the job, um, but he, uh, was at the top of the list, reachable, and, uh, he is one of the, uh, one of the firefighters that has served as a senior firefighter, um, which means he takes the place of a, uh, absent lieutenant, uh, on the tower truck. Um, and in that role, he's, he's developed a little bit of taste for the position of lieutenant. Uh, he's been a firefighter for eighteen years, firefighter one-two certified, he's a member of our honor guard, um, and another thing, he is, uh, he's a builder, and what we need to know in the fire service, when a structure is on fire, it's very important knowing how buildings are made. So hopefully that knowledge will, uh, assist him and his crews and all of us in, uh, in our, in doing our jobs. Uh, he's a lifelong Burlington resident, graduate of Burlington High School, he and his wife Mary are raising their three children here in Burlington, uh, he's been involved as a youth, youth sports volunteer, uh, he's very experienced, high-quality firefighter with proven abilities in the role of senior firefighter. I'm pleased to recommend firefighter William Tolan for promotion to lieutenant.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, and with the chief's recommendation, I appoint William Tolan to the position of lieutenant in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All, five zero zero. Unanimous, Phil Tolan, congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Do you want to do any, uh, bring your family up or anything, put photo or anything, or? Come on, Mary.
Photo.
No, Mary, you're not being bashful. Kids, yeah, get up, come on, kids. Mary, you want to have the, um, the.
So the next appointment would be, uh, for recommending firefighter Michael Donahue for promotion to lieutenant. Um, he would be taking the place of retired Lieutenant Saya as the emergency medical services officer, and he oversees, that position oversees the EMS program. Uh, again, firefighter Donahue is one of several candidates, um, chosen, um, he's been an eager and active participant in the role of preceptor. Our preceptors teach new firefighters as they come on board, uh, and, at firefighter paramedics on the ambulance, um, to bring them with a point, to a point where they can be on their, uh, be on there with one partner. Uh, he recently shadowed retiring, uh, EMS officers to gain some additional knowledge to this unique role. Uh, he's, firefighter Donahue has a long history in EMS, uh, he was actually an EMT while he was at school at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. Uh, he, he was an EMT, became a shift supervisor there, and finished as a coordinator of field operations. He's worked as a paramedic in both fire department-based systems and private systems. He's a member of the Northeast Massachusetts Technical Rescue Team, um, he has numerous certifications that I'm not gonna go through, um, and he's also an experienced, uh, EMS instructor. He's taught EMS at Northern Essex Community College and the New England EMS Institute. He's an experienced firefighter and very experienced in EMS. He holds multiple certifications in, in fire and EMS areas. His certifications as a fire EMS instructor will be extremely useful in the position of EMS officer. He's gained experience in higher levels of authority in the past as well. He's an excellent choice for promotion to fire lieutenant and EMS officer of the Burlington Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Michael Donahue to the position of emergency medical services officer, uh, lieutenant in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All, five zero zero. Michael, congratulations. Congratulations. And do you wanna, I don't know if you have family with him, or you wanna come up, you and Steve? Is Steve's here, right? Family with you, Mike? Is Steve here? Who's this handsome fellow in the, uh, uniform? Relative of yours?
That's my father. Nice to meet you.
This is, uh, Michael's father, Mike Donahue Senior, he's a deputy chief in the Chelmsford Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Any, any parting words for, from the, the board for any of these, uh, fellows, or?
We were good, but they're all going.
Thank you, guys. They've had a great show. It's nice to see, look, they always show up with a big crowd to, to support their, their, their guys, whenever there's a promotion or a, or a, you know, a new hire, so thank you, thank you to all of you, and your families.
Oh, lights went out.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, I'll turn it off. I, I agree, I agree. I agree. Short memories, hopefully. All right, I see our DPW director in attendance. Item one seventy-four, appointments. DPW has some appointments. Mr. White, good to see you this evening.
Thank you, good evening. I'm here for, uh, two appointment recommendation, uh, requests. Uh, the first, uh, we have, um, uh, someone in our highway division, special heavy equipment operator, um, uh, Kevin Keane, highway superintendent, and I completed interviews on July twelfth for this position. After review of qualifications, I'd like to recommend Henry Cody for the position. Uh, Mr. Cody has over six years of experience working in the construction industry, uh, most recently worked as a heavy equipment operator, uh, for the highway division in Bedford's DPW, uh, is a Class A CDL license and a Class Two A and One C hoisting licenses, and has also applied for his Four E and Four G licenses. Um, with his experience, credentials, and drive, I believe Henry will be a great fit in our highway division.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, with Brian's recommendation, I appoint Christina Hackes to the position of building custodian in the Burlington Public Works Department, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
All moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All, five zero zero. Congratulations, Henry, you're here. Paul, give some arrows, they're for us.
Congratulations.
Just give them a machine.
in the Burlington Public Works Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Christina, you're here tonight.
Chairman, have a quick question?
Yes, of course.
How is it really pronounced? How is it really pronounced?
To be honest with you, it's just like in Spanish because the J is the H, so Hackes, but it's just Jack. So it's right, it was right, both ways.
Good answer.
It sounds like she's running for board.
Yeah, right.
Everybody was right. Congratulations.
Thank you, Brian.
Both can win.
175, we've got another appointment, Council on Aging.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. So Brenda Pappas is going to be retiring beginning of October after 10 years, and we need to replace her. And during the pandemic, we accepted an intern from Salem State getting her master's. She did a phenomenal job, so when Brenda decided to retire, everybody, and I do mean everybody, reached out to this person and asked if she would apply, and she did. We did get 12 really good resumes, but having trained Sheila by ourselves and knowing what we were getting, she was far and beyond the person we wanted to hire. She was also the highest educated with her master's. She has a LIC in social work. One of our concerns was when she came onboard as an intern, was of course the fact that she's very well-known in Burlington, and so that can be something of a detriment when working with folks with their biggest secrets in life. But she's gone above and beyond in proving that she can handle it and knowing when she's reaching her boundaries and needs to hand somebody over to the other social worker. So we would very much like to have Sheila Farron join our team.
Thank you, Marge. With Marge's recommendation, I appoint Sheila Farron to the position of Social Worker in the Burlington Council on Aging and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor of Sheila?
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me. Five zero zero, Sheila.
Congratulations.
Hey, you really have some glowing recommendations. Good for you, young lady. Marge, do you want a picture with Sheila, maybe the 20?
Yes.
We can step aside for just a moment, sure.
Picture with Marge. Pulling one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No selfies at all.
See you, John.
Thank you.
Bye, Sheila. Sheila, see you soon. Right, a little behind schedule, but Chief Brown, item 177 approval, police cruiser. Did I miss somebody? Oh, my goodness, he's Mr. Flaherty. Sorry, Chris, sorry, sorry, sorry. 176, donation, picnic table for the town common. Chris, are you speaking on this item or?
I don't, I'm camera shy.
Words aren't necessary, is that what you're saying?
Oh, okay.
Come on.
Nice to see you all again.
Hi, Chris.
Paul, is it you or me?
As a board is aware from your backup, the Flaherty family is very generously intends to donate a picnic table for the town common in memory of Don Flaherty, who I think many of us here in Burlington know and passed away about a year ago.
March 2022.
So the board has jurisdiction over the common, so we're basically just looking for permission in order to cite the picnic table. Chris has already worked with Brendan on the type of table, and everything fits in, and I think Brendan has a couple of good ideas for a location as to where to cite that out there. So that's what the nature of this request is tonight, is to sort of accept the donation and allow for the table to be placed on the town common.
Great. Any comments or questions from the board? I thought you all might have something to say. Let me start with the.
Chris, after knowing your father for so many years, I can't think of a more deserving person to have a picnic bench on the town common for. Don loved this town, and this town loved your dad, and this is a great way to memorialize him in Burlington, and I'm hoping your family is going to have some family picnics at that table and hang out with your dad's spirit, but I couldn't be more supportive of this.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Nick?
Thank you. Look, Chris, if this table can't make the rounds to every municipal building and run the parade and call me at strange hours in the evening, I don't know if I want it, all right? Because nothing, nothing, in my opinion, can truly represent everything that your dad stood for and did for this community, you know, over the years. So, you know, no qualms for me. He, of course, gets at least a picnic table.
Thank you, Nick.
Anybody else? Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I didn't even know about this until I started going through our agenda, and I think this is an awesome idea, a great way to memorialize your dad, and I can't wait to see it, and I think it's wonderful, and I think it's great.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
What else can we say? He's an unbelievable guy. He deserves that more. He really does for everything he did for this town. He was, as they would say, he was a legend. He did a lot. Congratulations, there's no way we can't support this.
Thank you, Joe.
You know, it's often said, you and your mom know how I feel about it, so I don't think I need to say anymore. I probably can't say it without getting a big lump in my throat, but no, please do support this for the picnic table, and can't wait to see it out there on the common and park my rear end on it for a little bit. If you've got any, sorry, what? Joe's going to follow the question.
On this picnic table, is it going to have a plaque? Some type of plaque or whatever the family.
Yes, there will be a plaque.
Okay, because I know it's just a picture here, but I want to make sure it did have a plaque on it for.
Thank you. Chris, any final words?
Thank you, gentlemen, for all the kind words about Dad. Thank you for your support, and also thank you to Brendan and Kelly over at Parksmere Recreation for the support. This is a great program to memorialize community members on the common, so thank you.
Okay, great. All right, with that, is there a motion to approve the picnic table on the?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Puts five zero zero, there you go.
Thank you, gentlemen. See you around town.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, I apologize, I got ahead of myself there. 177, police cruiser redesign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in the interest of transparency, we wanted to bring the cruiser design before you, and I'd start out by mentioning, the past two years as chief, I've tried to be very fiscally responsible with the budget. I've come in, you know, under the guidelines each year, and one of the things we found over the past couple of years is nothing has gone up more in the budget than the price of cruisers. In the last two years, they've gone up almost $20,000. So I have a situation now where I have three waiting for me on a lot, but they're all black. In order to get those doors and roofs painted would be about $2,000 per car, so I sat back and said, well, how can we do this better? And I thought back to last spring when we got the motorcycle online, and Mr. DeBona was able to help us, and he is here today if there are any questions about the schematic. And I said, well, instead of, you know, throwing good money after bad and painting doors and roofs, why don't we try to come up with a different design? So I sat down with Jeff, and through his acumen here, you'll see, we came up with this design here. And this is a way to get the cars now that we need, because as you can imagine, there are some supply chain issues that are still going on with cruisers. If I don't grab these now, I don't know when I'll get the next round. So I figured this was a good way to go. What this allows is every chief, I think, wants to put their own stamp on their department. This allows me to do that, but also it gives some reinvigoration for the officers. There's some change there. Every single one of them likes it. And what I will address is probably the elephant in the room. Maybe they look aggressive to you, but to us, what they look like is command presence. And the thing that I want everybody to remember is the officer who's driving that is still a professional and personable officer that's getting out of there, that's going to deliver the highest police services within the town regardless of what that cruiser looks like. But the benefits and the cost benefits, I believe, outweigh waiting for potential supply chain issues to catch up with us. So I would like to bring it before you in the interest of transparency and get your comments, and certainly willing to take any questions, as is Jeff on the design.
Gentlemen, let me start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Chief, I think it looks great, and I think it's a great idea. I think they look really sharp. I love the design. Just a quick question, what happened with the order? Did they mess up your order to paint them wrong, or was there an error at the fact?
No, what happened is, you know, we hadn't put in the order, but we were able to work with McGovern Ford last year, and they reached out to us and said, hey, we have three cars sitting on the lot. They liked working with us last time. They said, if you're interested, we can sell them to you now. We don't know when the new ones will be in. So we put a hold on them, a verbal agreement to hold, and I wanted to bring this design before you before we, you know, went forward and purchased them, but they're ready to go provided you approve it tonight.
No, I think it's a great idea, that they look sharp, and I'm not worried about that command presence you're saying. We're very lucky to have such a professional and great police department, and no complaints and full support of all of it. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Chief, we've had a conversation about this. I think it's fantastic. I think that the whole scheme is unbelievable. I think it shows strength. Couldn't be more in favor of it.
Thank you.
Well, this away.
Your call. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the gray decal that runs along the side, along the back, are we doing anything on the back? Like, I know sometimes you might see the inverse chevron that kind of cuts the trunk.
And that is, in fact, what you'll see. I do have a picture of it, but I wasn't able to send it over in a JPEG to be put up there, but yes, it will have that. Jeff, I'm not sure what you call it, but it's basically the hazard design in the back. And we will also have on the back the accreditation decal, as well as the NEMLEC decal on either side of the license plate.
Jeff eagerly jumped up.
He's going to share something with.
Get a email over if you guys want to look at it.
Will you do that, Jeff? I'm going to jump down to Jim.
Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to pass that around?
Chief, I also agree with my colleagues here. I think it looks fantastic. I've noticed, you know, I do get, still get to see cruisers from other towns, and I notice other towns have been shifting to this solid color cruiser as well. It also makes it easier to make a low-profile cruiser, which is easier, better for traffic enforcement, maybe potential, you know, not full undercover, but it helps by, the low-profile cruisers are, you can't tell they're cruisers till you're up close to them. So that's a good way of, those are good uses for a low-profile cruiser, as the traffic enforcement, but I think it looks great, and like I said, other towns are moving in this direction, and I'm full support.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, select Muntigus brings up a good point. By going to one solid color, it also makes them easier when they transition out of a line operations segment and they go into admin or detectives, much less in terms of the bodywork and the painting. So it's another consideration financially. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. I got to admit, I mean, I don't know the first thing about lettering a police cruiser, what's right, what's wrong. It doesn't look menacing to me. I hope the public will agree. I think we're all in agreement, it's a pretty attractive-looking vehicle, and Jeff, no surprise, you come up, you're a pretty clever guy, you come up with some nice lettering schemes, and I want to thank you for offering your services again, so, yeah, I'm fine with it. By the way, all my time here on this board, I think it's the first time I've ever been asked to comment on any kind of design for any of the town vehicles. So while I'm here, we'll take this opportunity to say, maybe we should reconsider some of the lettering on our DPW vehicles. I can barely tell, I can't read them from, you know, if we had something a little bit big, they get to identify them as Burlington vehicles.
I have a peeve of mine as well, Mr. Chairman, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Haven't put my mark in on any vehicles yet, so maybe that'll be something that we look at going forward, because I tend to agree with you.
It's always kind of bothered me, is that one of ours? Regardless.
Starting to trend, Chief.
Tom, you don't need, Chief, you don't need to, you know, look for approval or anything. Oh, I guess you are, you are, it's approval right there. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve the police cruiser redesign.
I'm looking at that motion, we approved the new redesign of the cruisers as submitted by the chief.
Yeah, second.
Motion and a second to my left. Anything further from the board? Administrator, bringing down all favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Thank you both.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys, Chief.
Okay, item 178, citizens' time. Is there anyone in attendance for citizens' time, either here or online? See the attorney's looking around, I don't see anybody. I don't see any hands up online, but you agree then?
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda, the approval, transfer of pictureless license for Maki of Japan to Asian Chin, 75 middlesex turnpike. Is there anybody here representing that group? Do we need anybody here to represent that group?
No, this is a basic transaction, Mr. Chairman, transfer of the license from one operator to the other on the common virtual license.
You and Leonard are okay with?
Yeah.
All the paperwork's in order.
The board have any comments, concerns? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer.
Jim, I'll make a motion, we approve the transfer of the children's license from Maki of Japan to Asian Chow at 75 middlesex turnpike.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Michael down there. Anything further from the board, bringing down all favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. All righty. Item 180, public hearing. New beer and wine package store license, Raja and Rana's Indian Market, 232 Cambridge Street. This is a public hearing. It has been fully posted, your backup material is also available online and in various media outlets, so we will approve the notice as written and open the, open the hearing on the request for beer and wine package store license.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Tom Truax, I'm an attorney up in Salem, Massachusetts, and I'm peering on behalf of the proposed licensee, which is Dev Convenience Inc., doing business of Raja and Rana's. With me, to my immediate left, are Mr. Rathad, Ashen Rathad. He's the sole owner of the store, sole officer, sole shareholder, and seated next to him is Hetal Patel. She is the proposed license manager. As you indicated, the license application before you is for a new package store license, it's a beer and wine license, and it's proposed to be at 232 Cambridge Street in Burlington. It's one of several stores in a small shopping plaza at 226 Cambridge Street. Mr. Rathad has owned and operated Raja and Rana's since 2014 at that same location. He'd love to continue to do so. Mr. Rathad has toyed with the idea of adding a beer and wine license for many years. Customers have asked him to. He has thought about it, but he never followed through with it. But with the addition of the opening of the large Indian superstore in market in Woburn, that pushed him to follow through on his applying for this new license at his location. As a result, he has slightly altered his business plan, his business model. He's now going to add a package store and a convenience store component. He's at Indian Market right now. I have some pictures of the store that I took recently, so you can take a look and see what it looks like. I have a nice. see what it looks like and have an idea of the footprint on it besides just looking at the plot, the plan, the floor plan. In terms of, as I indicate, he's adding a component for a convenience and package store, but he's going to continue to have his Indian store roots. So you're still going to see probably about 70% of the store will be the same products that he sells now, the same Indian produce, the same Indian groceries that he sells now. But he's adding, he's already added a lottery, cigarettes, tobacco items. And he's also added things like, you know, you'd find at a typical convenience store, candy, soda, things like that you would find at any convenience store you go to. But what he wants to do with this beer and wine component is he wants to add, he wants, because he's trying to keep his Indian roots on this, the Indian store roots, he wants to keep a portion of that, probably about 20%, we'll see how it goes, but 20% of that will be Indian beer and wine. Now, I've done some research on it. Mr. Rothad has educated me on it, and it's pretty interesting history and what's been going on in the Indian beer and wine market. There are three major suppliers out there for the beer. One is King Fisher, the other is Hunter, and then there's Rupee. Now, Rupee has local ties. It's a northeastern graduate. He graduated in 2013, I believe, or 2010. But during the pandemic, he took up beer because there was a shortage of Indian beer. So he started Rupee. It's brewed here in Dorchester. And now it's one of the largest selling Indian beers in the world. And it's right here in our backyard. So that's one of the major suppliers he wants to bring to his store. As I said, Indian, King Fisher and Hunter, they're well-known names in India, and they have a distribution process here in the United States. So they're easily, they're easily obtainable. In terms of wine, I mean, you think of, you think of France, you think of Italy and what have you. But Italy, I mean, India is a big country, has lots of different climates. And there's two very big areas in India which grow wine. There's two big vineyards, and that's the ones he would include mostly in his purchases of wine. And that's Suelo Vineyards, and then there's Grova Zampa Vineyards. Those are going to be his big wine for Indian wines. So again, we're talking probably about 20% of his beer and wine will be Indian. And this is what I've read on and learned about is that the Indian beer and the Indian wine is not your typical, it's not like a Modelo, which is a Mexican beer or something like that. This beer and wine complements Indian food. So it's still going to be something that his Indian customers will want. But it's giving them something more when they come to shop at his store. They'll also have this one extra item, beer and wine, which I think they're going to love. And I know from his conversations with many people, we have a petition here, and I'll give that to the board shortly, there's been great enthusiasm for him doing that. But also, as I indicated, he's talking about a typical package store and convenience store. So he does have to still bring certain types of beers and wine. So now he'll have his typical craft beer, he'll have the typical beers that you would find in any package store. So he wants to be able to satisfy customer bases for his Indian customers and for everyone else. So it's going to be a lot to choose from, but it's going to be unusual in the sense of having the Indian beer and wine there. As for operation, the store layout is going to remain the same. I've taken some pictures and I'd like to pass them around just so I can show you where the beer and wine component will be in the store. I have five extra copies. My label's 1/2. Just quickly show you them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
First is the outside of the store. Mr. Rothad, rather large store. I don't have my 2,800 square feet. So that's a lot larger than your typical convenience store, which may be 1,000 square feet. So it's, I mean, it's a grocery store. It's a small grocery store. And that's what it's been and that's what it'll continue to be, but adding the beer and wine component. The picture number two just shows the checkout counter, which is right near the front. Picture number three shows the checkout counter looking down the aisle where the beer and wine will be. So there's an 18-door cooler on the left-hand side when you're looking at picture three. That will be the first nine, the first nine will be beer and wine in those doors, in those, that area, those first nine doors. And across from that on the shelving that is directly opposite of those nine doors will be beer and wine on shelves. So that's where the beer and wine will be in the store. And I think it's a perfect location for it because you have a checkout counter looking down the aisle. And so you can keep an eye every minute of the day on whoever is purchasing the beer and wine from that store. So I think it's perfect location. And the rest of the, the other, picture four just shows it looking up towards the same coolers, but looking up towards the checkout counter. So it's the same coolers, and that's the aisle on the left where the beer and wine will be kept for about nine of those doors. And then the rest of them, picture number five is just the back of the store. Pictures six, seven, and eight are just three of the other aisles that are in the store, which pretty much carry the Indian groceries. But there obviously will be a transition to a few more of those shelves taking up convenience store items. Store staff will be the same. Obviously, no sales before 8:00 AM, Monday through Saturday and before noon or whatever time Burlington allows on Sundays. His wife, Mr. Rothad, he has one employee, and Ms. Patel, they will be the employees there. For the beer and wine component, he's recruited Ms. Patel. Ms. Patel has owned and operated Ed's Mini Mart in Gloucester since 2008. I was there from 2008. I know the store. It was originally a beer and wine store. We turned it into, we were able to get a full alcoholic beer, alcoholic beverages license there. Over those 16 years, no violations up there. Ms. Patel has been the manager up there. She has a pretty good staff there now. She isn't there as many hours. At the beginning, she was there a 40-hour week for several years. But then over the years, she's been able to cut that down because she has such a great staff there. And obviously, the fact that there's been no violations in all those years is a testament to how well she's trained the employees. Their policy there is no carding everyone. So you're going to get the same policies that you have in Gloucester. You're going to have the same policies here in Burlington. So you're going to hopefully, I expect, the same track record that you have up in Gloucester. It's going to be the same track record you're going to get here in Burlington. And as I indicated, I'd like to present to the board, we have a 17-page petition in support. I've looked through it. I readily admit, not everyone is Burlington resident, but I'd say the majority of are Burlington, and 340 signatures. So these 170 are Burlington.
Everybody is saying for me, asking me.
They're anxious for it. I know there's Bill Ricker customers there because it's not that far up the road to Bill Ricker. But as I indicated, if you look through it, a majority are probably Burlington residents. In terms of stores in the area in public need, we have the petition, the voices of the customers, they really want this beer and wine component. The only other store, I've been up and down the highway unless I'm missing something. I believe we have Old Town Liquors at the Bill Ricker line, but I don't believe there's anything else on Route 3A. Obviously, you have the things over in Wegmans, and you have a Town Liquors over there on the Middlesex Turnpike. But I think this store would plug a big gap on Route 3A. And the Old Shaws, I'm told, there was an Old Shaws at 180 Cambridge Street, which is now the Dollar Store. There is precedent for having it in this area. That was a liquor store at one time, I'm told. So that's just around the corner from where Mr. Rothad's store is. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. Very good presentation. Let me start with the alcohol subcommittee for your comments. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Joe and I met with Mr. Rothad and his attorney, and we went over the plan and they answered all of our questions. And we had no, I have no issue with this. I think it's a good idea. The Rajan Rana's has been a good business in town for a long time, and I think it'll help their business and remain, help him remain competitive. So no issues, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. Joseph?
I don't like to say it all. I'm good with this.
Gentlemen, questions, comments, concerns?
Just a quick question. Will the name of the store say Rajan Rana's Indian Market?
Yes. Yes, that's what's on the application.
I'm good, thank you.
I got to tell you, I've been struggling with this all week and I've, and I've tried to be consistent. I've not liked the idea of gas stations, convenience stores and so forth over the years. I don't necessarily like it, I just didn't think we were ready for it here in Burlington. I would maybe disagree with your assessment about the gap in terms of beer available in that stretch. We've got an applicant right behind you. We'll be looking for the same thing, just.